Good evening. I'd like to call the January 28, 2020, meeting of the Pittsburgh Commission to order. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move into public input. I would like to ask that those coming forward. Yes, yeah, it's public input, yeah.
Good evening.
Okay, just give me one minute, because you're part of public input. We'd like to ask those coming forward to keep their remarks to three to five minutes. So, welcome, join us.
Thank you. May we pray? Father, your blessings upon this city commission for all the things that they do, the decisions they make. May they seek your guidance. Father, we ask your blessings upon our city administrators, all of our leaders, all of our workers. We ask your blessings that you will continue guiding them and protect them in their work, and we give thanks for them for making our city as wonderful as it is and to continue making it a city, a place where people want to come, live, and work, and to enjoy. Blessed this evening, Father, we ask your spirit to fall upon us all and that all the decisions that will be made tonight will be for the good of our community. We ask these things, in our name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? The race. Hi, if you have your name and your address.
I'm Ken Brock. I live in Pittsburgh on Grand Oaks. Patrick asked me to come down this evening and make a few comments that I've made when we dedicated the street on South Rouse. So, I'm proceeding. This looks like I'm eating a lunch at the Ma' Deli. That's where I see all of you guys normally. I moved to Pittsburgh in 1966. That was 54 years ago, and I can tell you that in 54 years, I've never seen Pittsburgh look better than it does today. I think probably any time now, after 54 years, I might be considered a local. So, I'm not sure exactly where that cutoff is, but I think I'm getting close. A few weeks ago, we had a friend visit our home from Tulsa. Teresa Berry, some of you know her. She lives in Tulsa now and used to be here in Pittsburgh and had a business here, the Western Sizlin, if you guys remember that. So, when she came to the door, she said, "What happened to your street?" I said, "What do you mean? What's wrong?" And she said, "Well, didn't it used to be narrow and have ditches?" I said, "Yeah, sure did." And there wasn't a sidewalk? "That's true, there wasn't." And I said, "Now it's a big, wide, thoroughfare, and it looks wonderful." She said, "Well, it's a pretty great solution to several problems, and we're really happy that it's been finished." So, she was impressed. Then we took her around town to see the other good things that have gone on. They took us through the campus, and there was, of course, a number of buildings she had never seen before, and that was impressive. Then we went downtown to look at Block 22, and she was impressed all over again. And we had coffee at one of the local coffee shops there, and that was, you know, that was a good thing. And so, we talked to her about several good things happening, but what she didn't know was in the seven years that she's been gone, there's been $470 million of improvements done in Pittsburgh in those years. Also, that she didn't know, of course, about the revitalization of downtown, and she didn't know that we are enjoying a 20-year low unemployment, and that's, you know, significant. She didn't know that median income was up 11%. And so, she also didn't know that we have two major new housing developments underway as we speak, and she didn't know that there was a sharp decline in poverty in the last seven years. So, all good things, all good news to her, and of course, good news to all of us. And I'll get back to the street in just a minute, but I told her, as I'll tell you, that one person really provided the leadership for most of those good things to happen, and it just so happens that he's been here seven years also. And so, I'd like you to join me in saying thank you to Darren Hall and the city staff. So, can you join me in doing that? And I know that that included the city commission and all the people that work at City Hall and that work around the community. Back to the street. I promise you, if this young man had not moved to Pittsburgh seven years ago, we would not be driving on that street today. That is a result of his good leadership and work with KDOT, and he's not the only one for us to thank. We need to also thank all the people that worked to make it happen. There were 12 people in the community, in our neighborhood, that wrote pretty good-sized checks to kick the project off. And there was another group of folks that gathered signatures from around the neighborhood to have, to bring to you folks to say that we wanted to do something there. And so, that was, you know, that was, they need to be thanked, because they worked hard. They were on the street and collected, I don't know, how many signatures did we collect? You remember, Darren?
Hundreds, hundreds.
Hundreds, okay. It was a major effort, so that was a good thing. And we should be thankful also to KDOT, because they invested a lot of money to make the project happen as well. Guys, there's a positive spirit in Pittsburgh of people working together like I haven't seen in these 54 years. It's a really, really good thing. And we need to say congratulations to all of you and to ourselves for the opportunity to drive on that nice street, and also say thank you to all of the city staff that helped make it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
I think there was another gentleman?
Yes, my name is Roe Parsons. And my address, do you need my address?
Yes, please.
8519 Northwest 50th McCune, Kansas. And the reasons I'm here tonight is I'd like to know how many other lawsuits have been filed against Block 22 and liens are placed on the buildings, and how many other contractors haven't been paid. We're going on two years waiting on our money, and it's getting a little ridiculous. We finished the project on time. They got a certificate of occupancy. They got to move in in August 1st of 18, I believe, and the elevators weren't done until February of 19. I mean, have the elevator people been paid? I mean, these are questions I'd like to know. And how much money is left owed to contractors that worked on this project?
Are you in communication with the owners?
Pardon me?
Are you in communication with the owners of Block 22?
My attorneys. They keep switching attorneys. So, every time they switch attorneys, we've got to go through all that again and incur costs again for our attorneys to refile papers, and it's getting just a little bit old. I mean, this gym that everybody thinks in downtown Pittsburgh has cost a lot of good people a lot of money. We've done a lot of projects in town. We did the Best Hotel. We had no problems. This job has been a problem.
Thank you. Any way else? Great, closed public comments. Just before we move into action on consent agenda, I just want to kind of review what's on the consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes from the January 14 meeting. We have approval of an appointment to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. We have an approval to the Airport Advisory Committee, and we have approval of the appropriation ordinances. Administration is recommending removal of Item B. Are there any other items that commissioners want to remove from the consent agenda?
What item, what's that?
B, B as in boy.
B?
I'd like to remove C.
C? Anything else? All right. I would look for a motion to approve Item A, the minutes, and Item D, the appropriations.
Make a motion.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Patrick. All those roll call vote. Roe?
Yes.
Fields?
McNee?
Yes. Munsell?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, approval of staff recommendation to appoint Sarah Chenoweth to fill an unexpired term as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee effective immediately and concluding on December 31, 2020. Darren, did you?
Mayor Commissioners, so it's my understanding in September, October, we kind of reached out to all the department heads and said, "Hey, in December, we're going to appoint new board members." For the most part, we had a lot of names, and you'll remember the day we, I don't know how many elections we held in here, but there were several. In December, Joel Stewart stepped off of the Sustainability Advisory Board. That created a vacancy, which we did not have time to advertise, and it was brought to my attention by several commissioners. They would like us to extend the deadline so we can have a chance to put other names in there and give people a chance to apply if they haven't had a chance. So, my recommendation was that we just extend the deadline to February 5. Make sure that our city clerk and public information manager do what they need to do, make a media release for anybody interested, and that'll give you a chance to appoint this position at the following commission meeting if that's your desire.
So, we would move to table this?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Chuck. Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. C, approval of staff recommendation to appoint David Moore to a first three-year term as a member of the Airport Advisory Committee effective immediately and concluding on December 31, 2022.
I'd like to do the same thing about this board as you did the first one, because I actually talked to David Moore, and he didn't even know he was on the agenda for tonight. And so, with four positions open, it should have been put out also. Sarah should have been able to put it out, just like the Sustainability Committee.
It had been.
It had been?
Yes, it had been.
Okay. I talked to Tammy and Sarah, and there was no mention of that. And David is the only one on a board for four?
There's a total of seven members on that board. Was it, we had three come off at the end of the year. We had advertised when we did with all the others that had, all the other boards that had memberships ending at the end of the year. Unfortunately, during the holidays, we had another member of that board pass away, so that brought us a total of four openings there. The reason that this was, his was not brought up at the same meeting that all the others were was his application came in the day after the initial deadline. So, we could not put him on the, he wasn't, we didn't have it in time for us to be able to put it into that meeting in December. And with having multiple spots open, we tried to hold off as long as we could. Our next meeting is the first Monday in February, so if we don't fill this position, we'll only have three board members for a group of seven, and there would be no way for us to hold a quorum. So, that's why we'd like to go ahead, approve David for this, so we can go ahead and have that meeting, and we're continuing to reach out. We're looking for a couple of airport users, as well as a non-user that lives inside city limits of Pittsburgh, to fill that board.
Does David fill a specific criteria?
Yes, he was a user.
Did he fill out an application?
Yes, he did. The application's in the path.
So, if he was appointed, then say by 5th of February with the other one, would you have the other three members to fill the board completely?
No, we would not. As I say, with this appointment here, we'd have four members with three vacancies.
Which means we can have a quorum and actually do business, even though we don't have a full board.
And continue to try and recruit.
Correct.
So, that'd be ongoing, then, people that might want to be on the board, there's no date that, the application need to be in by for the rest of the?
No, since we've already advertised it, we're also, Bill Powell, Airport Manager, has been trying to work, reach out to all the airport users to try and find folks that are interested. Number of folks that have been on the board before, and I did not want to serve again, so again, we're trying to work with them, trying to find some candidates there. If it goes for an extended period of time, we may go back and reevaluate the makeup of the board and then bring it back to the commission for action if we decide to do that. At this point in time, we're still trying to move forward and fill all seven spots.
You'd probably, you'd have to have an odd number, then. You could go?
Right. You prefer to have the odd number, then, that way?
You've got four now.
Correct.
With this one denied.
Yeah, with this one tonight, we'd have four, so we could have a quorum. But the preference is always to have an odd number, so that you can have a firm up or down on any close vote.
It just seemed odd that there's four vacancies, and I hadn't heard where it had been advertised. So, I knew the other boards that we'd voted on on December the 10th, you know, but?
Yeah, it was all part of that big blitz out there, as well as, again, like I say, Bill Powell's been, we knew this was coming up, so he'd been reaching out the last three months of last year to try and see if there was interest there.
So, Sarah Runyon had put it out there?
Yes.
Okay. Have no further questions?
If there's no further question, I move approval.
I second.
It's been moved by Patrick, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider the following. Annexation request, Eric Bradshaw and Jacqueline Eustace. Consider the, consider the request submitted by Eric Bradshaw and Jacqueline Eustace to have their property located at East 530th Avenue annexed into the city of Pittsburgh. Approve or disapprove the request to annex, and if approved, authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pretty straightforward request. It is a request from the landowner to be annexed into the city limits. This will be the site of a new facility for renewed medical and office, because, and Henry, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, because the property is adjacent to existing city limits, really, your approval tonight and then the approval of an ordinance at the following meeting is really all that is required. But for the folks watching at home, just in case you're not familiar with where we're talking about, right here is the hospital. This is a place called Names and Numbers. Not sure if you've ever been there, Ken. Just east of the railroad tracks would be this property right here is where the Eustace Bradshaw property is. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions, but again, did want to point out that it is them requesting to be annexed and certainly not the city initiating that act. It's a request from the property owner.
Blake, is it east or west of Silverback Way?
East.
East, okay.
If there's no further question, I move approval. I second it.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Blake. Moving on, Ordinance Number G 1308. Consider adopting Ordinance Number G 1308, amending Section 2, 332 of the Pittsburgh Code to increase the number of members of the Human Relations Commission from seven members to nine members. Approve or disapprove the ordinance, and if approved, authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance on behalf of the city.
Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance just simply increases the number of the membership of the Human Relations Commission. At the last meeting, there was some confusion about the number of memberships that were on that commission. There were only seven. You took action to appoint eight. This will take care of that situation, plus appoint a city employee, in particular, a human relations manager, as the ninth member of that commission.
So, we had an ordinance that was approved in November that stated seven. There was some confusion at the last meeting, and now we're asked to reapprove it with nine members.
No, the ordinance preexisted. It had been in place for many years. There was some confusion during the meeting as to the ordinance version that was currently in effect, and at the time of that meeting, the ordinance version that was in effect had seven members, nine. It had previously been?
Been nine, okay.
Years before.
Okay. Any further questions for Henry?
If there's no further question, I move approval. I second.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry, to approve adopting the Ordinance G 1308, Section 2, 332. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Now, to the appointments. Because we have now amended that ordinance, we will reappoint the individuals that had applied last time. So, appointments to Human Relations Commission. Confirm the appointment of Heather Dockerty, Michelle Decree, Amber Hames, Carol Hammbocker, Chad, oh, what is it?
Hammerbocker.
Hammerbocker. There's an E-R in there. Sorry, Carol. Chad McCubbin, Dan Rotavah, Xavier Shee, Walter Simpson, and Ally Smith, to first three-year terms as members of the Human Relations Commission, effective immediately to conclude on December 31, 2022.
If there's no discussion, I move approval.
I second it.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry, to approve the appointments to the Human Relations Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Agreement, East Quincy Street reconstruction. Consider entering into an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for the reconstruction of East Quincy Street from Joplin to Rouse into a three-lane roadway with curb and gutter, and enclosed storm sewer and sidewalks on each side.
Thank you. The city of Pittsburgh was awarded a cost-sharing grant with KDOT. What we'd be doing with that would be to reconstruct Quincy Street from where we ended the previous project there, just east of Joplin Street, and extend that three-lane cross-section all the way to Rouse Street. We'd have a three-lane crossing there with the rubber tracks, an improved crossing there, and we'd also have sidewalks on both sides and enclosed storm sewers. So, it'd be quite an improvement through that area. I think this was what originally had been envisioned for total project when that first phase was done. The KDOT dollars kept shrinking, so the project kept shrinking down to where it was just basically from Broadway to Joplin. So, where are we in currently right now? Just east of Joplin, on the north side of PSU. We'd pick up from there and continue that all the way to Rouse.
What do we estimate our portion of this is?
Is it, right now, the estimated total cost of the entire project, which would be design engineering, construction engineering, inspection, construction, right-of-way acquisition, utility adjustments. That's roughly about $7 million in total.
And our share?
With this, on the construction side, it would be three and a half from the state.
And this is going to come out of?
It'd be future bond issues.
Well, this is certainly something that we needed. We've talked about this for a long time. It's great that the state has stepped up to help us.
Any other questions for Cameron?
I do.
Yeah.
How's this going to affect the cemetery?
It should not affect the cemetery. Taking a look at the initial layout there, I believe that we'll be able to be in the existing right-of-way on the south side. If we look at doing any acquisition, it'd be more likely on the north side.
Okay, so the sidewalk won't be on the cemetery side?
It'll be in the right-of-way on the cemetery side, but will not be in the cemetery.
I got you. Thank you.
Any further questions?
If there are none, I move to approve. I second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Patrick, to approve the East Quincy Street reconstruction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more question. When do we think this is going to get started, Cameron?
Since we've got the approval of the agreement, we'll go out and do an RFQ for engineering firms to do the design. Currently, right now, we've put together the schedule. We weren't sure if it would go through a KDOT review, actually go through the KDOT bidding process or not. So, right now, we're looking roughly December of '21 to put this out for bid. Right now, what we're looking as far as construction time would be to start work at the end of the spring semester for PSU in '22, and then wrap up before their fall semester in '23.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, equipment leasing, Bobcat Compact Excavator. Proposals will be received on January 28, 2020, for the financing of a Bobcat Compact Excavator with attachments for use by the Pittsburgh Public Utilities Stormwater Division at a total contract price of $64,884.98. After evaluation of the proposal, city staff will provide a verbal recommendation to the commission and will request approval to purchase the equipment and to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement with the final institution, with the financial institution, providing the best interest rate and annual payment.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This afternoon, we took bids for both this item and the Skidsteer on the next item. We had five local banks participate today, and today, we got an interest rate of 2.21% on the financing auction. So, we'd ask that you move to approve the item or answer any questions you might have.
We just, is this something similar to what we bought for the wastewater treatment plant?
No, that was a telehandler that we bought out of the wastewater plant.
What was it?
Basically, an extended arm forklift. That was a telehandler that we just bought earlier this year for the wastewater plant. This is a mini excavator for the stormwater division.
I have a question, and I know it's something I should know. It says we are entering into a five-year lease/purchase agreement.
Yes.
What does lease/purchase?
At the end of the year, at the end of the five years, you could buy it back for a dollar. They could, or we could just buy the equipment. We'll have the equipment paid off in that timeframe with it, and so, we would take ownership of it at that point.
Okay, so basically, we're leasing it until the end of five years?
Yeah, it's a public, yeah.
Okay.
It should be a loan, in the language.
I knew I should know that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Matt, are you getting rid of any of equipment?
We participated for the last several years. Bobcat had an annual lease agreement, which was roughly half the cost of what this lease/purchase agreement is. And so, every year, at the end of the year, they would give us a new piece of equipment, and we did an annual program, and they turned it and they put the resale on that piece of equipment. So, we've been participating for that for the last couple of years. But Bobcat has since, because of market changes, they've halted that program. So, we gave ours up at the end of the year, and we're ready to move forward with, no one else owns that program, and all our other attachments are still Bobcat attachments, which kind of, but these contracts are off-the-state contract purchasing and the national joint resource well for the national joint purchasing prices. So, that's where we're continuing to move forward with Bobcat.
Any other questions for Matt?
If there's no other question, I move approval.
I second.
Moved by Patrick, Patrick, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Equipment leasing, Bobcat Skidsteer Loader. Proposals will be received on January 28, 2020, for the financing of a Bobcat Skidsteer Loader with performance and comfort packages and attachments for use by the Pittsburgh Public Utilities Street Division at a total contract price of $54,650.10. After evaluation of the proposal, city staff will provide a verbal recommendation to the commission and will request approval to purchase the equipment and to enter into a five-year lease/purchase agreement with the financial institution, providing the best interest rate and annual payment.
Are there any questions I can answer on this one? This one's very similar to the mini X.
Both same financial institution.
I'm sorry, Community National Bank is also low at 2.21% on the rate. And we did, I didn't mention earlier, Community National. We're in agreement with them currently right now on all our parks, lawn mowing equipment. So, we've worked with them before.
No questions. If there's no questions, I move to approve. I second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Larry, to approve the Bobcat Skidsteer Loader lease purchase. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, moving into non-agenda reports and requests. It was pointed out at the last meeting, I think Commissioners had received a letter from some concerned citizens about dog feces around, their concern was specifically around PSU and that owners of dogs are not being respectful in picking up their feces. They referred to it as poop, we call it, litter. It was, they referred to it as poop in tall letter. We do have an ordinance, uh, hard to enforce, as you can imagine, so, um, you know, we would, we'll reach out to PSU to see what kind of education they can do with their students, and, um, maybe reach out to Pittsburgh Beautiful. They've done a great job at, yeah, at doing, um, awareness for litter, and maybe they'd be willing to take on that topic, so, just wanted to clarify that.
At our, at our study session, uh, the representative from PSU said that they were, uh, talking, uh, making a point about this with their students who are living in Block 22 area. So they are, they are on it, but it's just up to the individual animal owner to take care of.
And Kim pointed out, um, at the dog park, we have, um, bags, and do you want to share? There were some other locations where there are deposit bags.
Yes, we do have several around town, um, at Lincoln Park, at Memorial Auditorium, and we are, are getting a few more, uh, one that will be closer to Block 22, uh, to help the residents there and, and the owners around there, and then some at Lakeside Park, and, and so we are looking at some more. I did speak with Darrell Polian with Pitt State yesterday, um, and I know Darren had spoken to him also, so we are, uh, working on that with them.
Great.
Could we also look at, uh, along the trail that Ken just talked about, or any of our trails? Could people like to walk their dogs? It'd be nice to have something available, uh, on the trail.
We'll look at maybe putting one at a trailhead, so, so maybe at the beginning of the trail, but, but probably not down the length of the trail, but maybe something, you know, one or so, so there's one available somewhere, but, um, it is the owner's responsibility to, to make sure that they are picking up after their pets.
Thank you, Kim.
Just as a point of fact, I happen to walk my dog around my neighborhood, and I recycle my newspaper, uh, plastic wrappers, and it works just fine, just sits right over your hand.
In case anyone was confused on how to do that.
If they can come by, I'll be glad to show them.
So Darren, did you have anything from the city?
Yeah, there was one, Quentin, um, I believe had a resolution that passed out of a committee yesterday, which is why it's not on the agenda, but because of the timing, we wanted to bring it to you today for your consideration.
Yeah, uh, so we have a, um, a potential housing development that, uh, I presented on Working Day. You all had, had received that, that packet there to get an idea of this housing development. Um, the, the reason for the, the non-agenda item and, and the timing of it is that, that project first had to go to P&amp;Z for approval for replat and rezone of the, uh, project area, and, uh, obviously without that, we wouldn't, uh, come to you with this. So with respect to time to apply for the, the grant at the state, which is due, uh, at the end of this week, uh, we, we would like to come to the commission for a, uh, resolution of support for that development.
Yeah, this is a real nice project. Good location, right on Fourth Street, Highway 126. It's really a nice project and rather large.
And this is just phase one?
Good company doing it.
Yeah, so, so this will be phase one. And Brett Mason, uh, from Redwood is actually here, if there were any questions specifically about the company, uh, or about any other developments that they, that they have. They actually have three in Pittsburgh. There's Hopefield Gardens, one and two, and then Pittsburgh Apartments, so. Very well maintained, um, they have a unique structure where they are the developer, uh, finance and, and, uh, property manager. So it's not, uh, outside development company that sells to, uh, someone else and they manage the property, or an outside developer that hires a property manager. They, they do it all.
Well, these two existing properties they have in town sure, certainly are nice. I've driven around them several times, and they really, uh, look like they're well-maintained and cared for.
And I did do research, and, uh, they had zero code violations.
Congratulations.
I, I did want to check on that before, before I was asked, and there, there has been zero. So that was nice.
So you're looking from us?
A, uh, for the resolution of support and approval of the project.
So it would be a resolution of support for, for and approval of a family housing development at approximately 1700 East Fourth Street in Pittsburgh, Kansas, urging the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation to award low-income housing tax credit to Redwood Development, Inc., to enable construction of 48 apartment units at said address. That would be the motion. Entertained.
I would, uh, I second. I, I think it really is a good, good program. It's a, it's a good one. It's, and pricing, uh, estimated pricing looks, uh, you know, to some people it would seem high, but it seems pretty reasonable for this to, very, very nice facility. I recommend it.
Resolution, um, motion made by Larry, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other non-agenda items from the city?
Not from staff.
I got a couple.
Okay.
Recently, Crawford County approved a real resolution establishing awaited bid preference. Uh, their local sealed bids are 5% for local business in Crawford County. Over the years, I've, I've always felt like we should look at ours, which is, uh, is I believe 3%, so I'm just asking Darren if you could look into that, maybe get something for discussion, maybe possibly on the next meeting agenda.
Sure. Yeah, we can check around, see what's changed, and then obviously, uh, n- nothing has to change if you want to do five, um, we can do that too, so we'll prepare the necessary paperwork and ha, and, and do some research and tell you what we come back with, but maybe the best thing for us to look at would be some of the most recent bids and see if five would include somebody that's currently not included because three's not enough, but, uh, we'll start there and, and come back with some. That work?
And the second thing I have, and I don't know the rest of you have any calls on this, but I've had a lot of calls lately on Mission Clay buildings, uh, being demolished, and the calls that were concerned if the city's involved in doing that. And being old, I tried to remember, uh, that when I talked to Darren about this, that we weren't involved in that, but if you could talk a little bit about that, Darren, and what's going on out there?
Sure, so, um, we, we received a grant for $350,000 a few years ago to test the material on, on the site, and it didn't just include Mission Clay, but it was actually, uh, several blocks out in either direction. We have yet to spend that money. Uh, we were visited by Mission Clay and told pretty clearly that they didn't want us on their property, so, um, we weren't to, to test any of the material on that property. Since then, we've been kind of backing up with the Ca, Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the EPA to determine, um, if we could at least get on the right-of-way over there, what our options were. Um, in the meantime, the building started coming down, as everybody was aware, a few months ago.